So with that, I'll go ahead and call to order our regular briefing agenda for Monday, July 11th. And we'll just dive right into DOT's presentation. Thanks, Steve.
Sounds great. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I am Steve Rourke, Region Administrator here for Wash Dot. And I've, twenty minutes ago, we had a bit of a network outage here in our entire facility. So I'm doing this via my phone hotspot. So if I lose you, I apologize in advance. Technology. All right. Well, I need to share my screen. Let's see, did that show up on your end? There we go. All right. Well, hey, good morning again. Just wanted to thank you in advance for asking me to come out to your meeting today. I'll be covering a couple of topics. I wanted to start with just kind of a general construction update. And talk about Fish Barrier Program, obviously talking about our freight portal work, roundabouts on SR3. And then share some thoughts on some perhaps low-cost enhancements at Ridge Point Boulevard. So that's what I have prepared today, but obviously anything you'd like to talk about, I'd be happy to go there. So let me get started. This slide is not just Mason County, but what we have going on around the region here. As far as our construction program this summer. So lots going on. Summer is kind of synonymous with construction. And no doubt travelers this summer are gonna run across various work zones around the region. So let me zoom in to Mason County. Probably the two most impactful projects that we have this summer. They're chip seals, like called BSTs. They're great for extending lives of our pavements and keeping our system in a state of good repair. Both of these projects, they're actually part of a region-wide project. So I can't pin down the exact dates yet. We're meeting with our contractor, actually next week. We discuss the timing of these. But a twenty-mile segment there, it's the entire segment of SR106. And then a four-mile segment up by Lake Pushman on August 19th. Those will be going on, I would imagine, next month. But we don't have a date yet. And then I wanted to, I threw this slide in. It's not a Wash Dot project, but it's on a state highway. You may already be familiar with it. It's out by the dot club. The Navy's doing seismic retrofits out there. This is a four- or five-month effort, the alternating one-way traffic on SR3. Not super impactful, but something that it could slow travelers, travelers down. Then I wanna look a little bit to the future. We have, as you're probably aware, we have a robust fish barrier program here. Required to restore ninety percent of the habitat within the injunction area by 2030. And what you see on the screen there is a package of projects on 108 and 101. These will be built in 2024, for the most part, perhaps 2023, so perhaps next summer we'll get started on. There, we're getting creative on some of these on 108. We may propose a total closure for some of these, you know, high-impact, short-duration type work. But we'll keep the community engaged as we go forward and figure out the best way to reconstruct these projects. All right, another fish passage project on 106. You may have heard about this one. We are proposing a long-term closure here in conjunction with the state park, up to twenty days. The thought is that this would occur, this is next summer, after the Fourth of July. So a big chunk of July, 106, would be closed to do this work. I understand the park is also looking at this closure as an opportunity to do some work on their facilities. I'm not exactly what you have planned. But this will be an impactful project, I think, closing road for a significant period of time. All right, freight corridor. I am still training myself to call this the SR3 freight corridor. It was the Belfer bypass for so many years. Obviously, a vital project for the region for many reasons. In those slides depicting the connections at both ends, I have more ups than those in the next two slides. So don't strain your eyes trying to see those. But it's an important project. We're actively working the design to refine and get us to a place where we have an environmental document. We can begin acquiring the right way necessary to construct the project. Current status, our environmental assessment for the corridor is expected to be completed by the end of the year. And at the same time, we're advancing our access plans, our right-of-way plans. This is a limited access facility, so we need to go through an access process. We expect to have all of the right-of-way and access plans ready to go in October of this year. So you put those two things together, we think we'll be in a position to buy the right-of-way starting January 2023, if all goes well. We're currently planning to advertise for construction in early 2024, which would allow construction to start that summer and likely roll into 2026 before it's all open and operational completely. Budget is, you know, we don't have a refined design yet, but we did get twelve million additional dollars from the legislature to address escalation. And so right now, we have a total of roughly seventy-nine million dollars to build the project. And we think that that is sufficient at this point in time, although we are seeing a lot of pressure on materials costs and construction escalation. So we will see what this looks like as we approach our construction advertisement. Now, there is some interest. I'm sure you're aware, there's some interest in adding connections at Romance Hill and Log Yard Road. We are certainly open to exploring those ideas. I will, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say it would hurt our schedule if we were to add that work into this project. I'm also concerned about budgets, but certainly open to that conversation to figure out what that looks like. So we can certainly talk more about that if we want. So that's a quick hype-up update on the freight corridor. And I wanted to just spend a few minutes talking about the connections at each end, because they're pretty important and they're drastically different. Then, obviously, this route doesn't exist today, but they're roundabouts. And roundabouts are often controversial. What you see on this slide is the south end. It's impactful to the community and the school. I think our team did a pretty good job, if you will, shoehorning that in there to minimize those impacts. But clearly, a different configuration the community will need to adjust to. I would also point out, we've included some multi-use paths in there to support all modes of travel. And with the school and the community right there, I think it's a nice addition. Two roundabouts close together to tie in the business loop, if you will. I'm not sure we're officially calling SR3 through Belfer a business loop. But ties in SR302 and what is SR320. And then moving up to the north end, the connection with Lake Floor Road. And for context, this intersection would be roughly three-quarters of a mile from the new roundabout at Log Yard Road. It requires realigning Lake Floor a little bit, bringing it to the whole intersection to the south so that we can avoid some impacts to the facilities there, businesses. You'll note there is a slip ramp. So if you're coming from, say, the metropolitan area and you want to go to downtown, there is a dedicated slip ramp, slip ramp in the roundabout design. So what we expect to be that heavy traffic. That's my update on the freight corridor. And then I wanted to get this on your radar, if it isn't already. In 2024, we do have designs we're working on to put roundabouts at Pickering and Aggett Road, so a little further out on SR3. Those are fairly low cost. We think we can get those built for, you know, a little over a million dollars each. So it should help in terms of safety benefits for those intersections. And then the last thing, I think this is my last slide. I wanted to just, you know, we've received a lot of input from the community about Ridge Point Boulevard and the development that's gonna add more trips to that intersection. There's a lot of concern about its operation and its safety. It's not lost on us. You know, we worked through a traffic impact analysis. There's level of service standards. You know, no further mitigation was required under the level of service rules we work with. But that concern is still there. And we have had some crashes at this intersection. We had a very tragic incident not that long ago to the intersection to the south at Coquelin, which is a private, private road. So, you know, our traffic office has looked at, you know, what can we do here to help motorists understand this intersection a little better. It doesn't show up on this slide very well. I'm not much of an artist, but there's some dashed lines you'd see there on the graphic. This summer, we're gonna, we're gonna put in that dashed line to define the edge of travel way for the through lane. We think that that gives motorists a better sense of, there's a lot of pavement out there. This gives motorists that are at Ridge Point to go and come up and say, okay, that's where the edge of the travel way is. One last thing to figure out as you're trying to make turns out of that intersection. So that's one thing. We're planning to put that in during our normal striding operations later this summer. But it's an intersection we're gonna keep an eye on. Every two years, we look at all of our intersections from a safety standpoint. And that's something we're gonna keep an eye on here in the region. So that was kind of short and sweet, but I'm anxious to see if I can answer any of your questions or dive into any topic you'd like.
Great, Steve. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Steve?
I think just some comments. I'm pretty darn excited about the roundabouts out at Aggett and Pickering. Those are some wicked intersections. And I know that there are lots of elderly, well, shoot, even me, I've gotten stuck there and wondered, should I get it or should I just be very patient? And so having those roundabouts will be needed stress relievers, I think. And I appreciate the update on the freight corridor also. I still want to call it the Belfer bypass too. So I'm sure that there's a lot of people that call it that too. But it's neat to know that it is moving forward. And there's been a lot of frustrations, I guess, because it's taken a long time. But government does not move at warp speed sometimes, which is sometimes good, because then you get it right. Appreciate that also. And I'm sure that Commissioner Netherland will have some comments about the, the, right there by McDonald's too. That's a scary intersection too. And so I appreciate that you're taking a look at that. It's a, it is a concern for Mason County residents and for those that are traveling there. But I do think that the bypass is gonna be, see, I get it. The freight corridor is going to be an asset. It's gonna help a lot in the future. So appreciate the update. Thank you.
You're welcome. I agree that if the corridor is gonna take some pressure off, you know, folks that don't need to drive through downtown, if you will, it's gonna be a great improvement. I didn't mention this, but I should say, you know, in conjunction with our access right-of-way plans and the environment, we are scheduling an open house. There'll be a virtual auction with the community sometime this fall. So I should have mentioned that. It's an important part of the process.
Great. I think Commissioner Tross teed up Commissioner Netherland there.
Yeah, hi, Steve. If you don't mind, if you would contact me at some other points, we could have some offline discussions regarding the connections, Romance Hill and et cetera. I've had many conversations with people, your predecessors and stuff before you. That should have all been included. It is surprising to me that we're even having this discussion. So if you don't mind, but I'll take that offline and we'll have those discussions, please. As for McDonald's, is is a write-in, write-out only, is that gonna be in our territory and for us to make determinations on? Or is that something that we should be working with you on? Or what is our option there to get that to be a more realistic entrance? You know, I live here. I live there. I deal with it. I watch people going in and out of there, and it just blows me away. Putting lines is not going to change anything there. And I'd rather do something before the loss of life instead of waiting for afterwards. But again, is that gonna be our responsibility because of where that road is? That's a private road going into the state highway. But maybe we do it through our zoning or through some other building code or something like that? Or is that something you're gonna help with, or we should be working with you?
You know, I think it'd be best if we worked together on that. So our traffic engineer here, I asked her to look at a write-in, write-out at Ridge Point. For, for analysis, for lack of a better term. You know, if you, if you, most of the destinations, you know, I don't, we didn't go out to a traffic study, but most of the destinations we suspect out of Ridge Point are to the south, you know, the services in the downtown area. And if we do a write-in, write-out there, it's about a two-plus mile out of the way to get, to get back downtown. And, you know, there is no standard for what's an acceptable trip you would just travel for a traveler. But we suspect that will not be received well by the community, based on our experience elsewhere. I think there's still an opportunity, if that's what we want to do. Coquelin, and I forgot the name of the street that connects from Coquelin over to Ridge Point, those are private. So I think, you know, if the county, if, if the community says, hey, we'll, we'll keep those connections there, I think write-in, write-out could work. But our sense is there needs to be some way to turn south on SR3. So I, let's certainly circle up and talk about it. I think we're open to anything the community wants to do.
Yeah, when we get together to talk about this other, I'd appreciate if we go ahead and talk about that. You know, I was talking to the sheriff the other day, and he's leaving, one of his last requests is just, you know, I've been bringing this up to the community, and the community's been bringing it up to me. I'm surprised at how little pushback there's been for a write-in, write-out, because I think everybody sees the catastrophes waiting to happen. You know, aside from that, we've also had people that try to make a right turn. They have to do it so quickly, they go off the other side. There's, there's all types of different issues with that particular road. But even the sheriff, he said that's one thing that he'd love to see me make sure that I do not give up on, because you know, he's trying to save those lives as well. So I look forward to that conversation with you and seeing how we can better work through that process. But I believe honestly, something must be done. It's gonna get ten times worse here in the next few months. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve, I would agree with that. I think, you know, there is, there obviously, nobody likes to go, you know, upwards of two miles out of their way. But I think if you would ask folks what their preference is, would you rather add a couple of minutes to your drive or potentially have you or a loved one be involved in a serious collision? I think the choice is pretty clear there that taking a right out of there and using the wonderful roundabout that DOT partnered with us on and being able to take advantage of that up there is probably a preferable thing. And so I think, I think this is a conversation that needs to be ongoing and certainly, you know, open to any and all suggestions and options in the area of those intersections. It just, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a high-risk area for folks. And just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to address it. Speaking of higher-risk areas, I did, I did want to bring up in the area where you're doing the fish passage removal on 106 at Tuono. There are two crosswalks there that go from the camp side to the beach side. And I know that the speed limit drops there during the summer months to twenty-five from the forty. But with the tree coverage and the shade issues in there, I think it's still difficult for motorists to always see pedestrians trying to cross, especially young kids and families. I know that there are the flags there for people to use when they cross. But I, I think we need to evaluate putting some lighted beacons in there so that it draws more attention for drivers when folks are trying to utilize those crosswalks. I was through there over the weekend and stopped at a crosswalk for a mom and her two daughters. And they had the flags and three people that were going in the opposite direction blew right through the crosswalk and didn't, didn't slow down at all until I started flashing my high beams at them. And finally got the fourth driver's attention and they stopped. But, you know, that's a great park. People will recreate there quite a bit year-round. But in particular, during the summer, when we have those big crowds there, it would be, I think, really helpful to get some lighted beacons at those crosswalks. Commissioners, anything else for Steve? I think we, I think we definitely got our money's worth, at least so far this morning, out of him.
That's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I look forward to talking with you later.
Yes, I wish we all set up some time. Thank you for having me today and look for you to reach out to me anytime if you need something.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Take care. Okay, it looks like next up on our agenda, we have Mendy Harlow from the Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. Mendy, are you with us? There you are. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Great. Here to chat about Sweetwater Creek. So I'll spin it over to you.
Great. So I provided an updated letter of support for the commissioners to consider for the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park project, which will be the only ADA-accessible freshwater fishing dock in Mason County and the only ADA fishing dock on the north end of the county. It will also include public restrooms available and connected to the Belfer sewer system. It's also immediately adjacent to Belfer Elementary School. And we've received letters of support from the superintendent of North Mason School District, as well as many teachers because of the environmental education opportunities that it will present to the community. Additionally, the project will resolve at least two fish passage barriers. And we are coordinating with Department of Transportation on their upcoming Highway 3 work. So it will, with that Highway 3 work, it will also resolve that fish passage barrier. So three fish passage barriers happening all coordinated at one time with that park. So, so I also provided last week the additional letters of support that you had asked for from the previous meeting back in May. And just wanted to ask or answer any questions that you might have about the project and see if I can garner your support in, in the project moving forward.
Yeah, thanks, Mendy. So I was, I was one of the commissioners that had some issues initially with this. And I just, I want to first say thank you to Mendy and her board member Kelly Kooh for taking the time to sit down with me and chat through some of those concerns. And I'm really pleased to see the language in the letter regarding the passage removal. It's just such a critical component of the work that we all do. And so I appreciate that and the time that you took to go through that process with me. So with that, I will be supportive of moving the letter forward and look forward to getting that on our next action agenda. Commissioners?
Sorry, I was reviewing the letters again. Truly want to thank you for reaching out. I know that I was one that was really pushing for the letters and appreciate your time and your energy getting those letters together. I do like the idea of the park. I really do. And, and I think, you know, it'll be fun seeing a water wheel, even though it's not functioning. I love water wheels. I think they're just fascinating. And I guess anything that moves is I don't know if I'm a nerd or what, but I think it's cool to see how things work. And you'll probably have to show me how it works so I don't try to take it apart and figure it out, because I do that with vacuums too. So, so I will also be in support, but I also want to encourage you to work with all community members to make sure that that's, that's a part that everyone can be proud to put their name on and to support. But I'm, I'll be in support of this letter also.
Thank you.
Mendy, I'm always proud of you. I've watched you do some incredible things over the years, you and your organization. It's so funny how, well, it's fifteen years ago, we were adversarial with the organizations, not you. You weren't there. But when you've taken it over, you've changed it to such a productive, thoughtful organization where you've taken into account so many different options and great things and empowering of different individuals. This is one perfect example of that. And again, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I've been supportive from day one. I'm more than supportive now, and I want to thank the other commissioners for being supportive as well. This is gonna have a huge impact on my community up there in the north. Not to mention, I can't wait to see a veteran, handicapped veterans sitting there and fishing off of that pier. I just think it's probably one of the most incredible things that you could do. So thank you for all your hard work and thanks to the commissioners for the support as we move forward.
Thank you.
Great. Mendy, anything else from us, or is that, do you have anything else?
No, that's great. Thank you. I really appreciate all your support and look forward to working with you in the future on this project and other things too. So thank you.
Great. Thanks. Best to you and your board. Thanks so much. Okay, next up, we have Mason, Shelton Mason Chamber of Commerce. Heidi, are you on with us yet? There she is.
I've never done that before. Oh, yes, I have.
I am really talented. Hold on one second. Oh, sorry. Hello. Oh, good grief. Okay. So I'm actually here on behalf of Skookum Rotary today. So I'm wearing my other hat. So I'm not here on behalf of the chamber. You, you may have heard that we are moving forward with a in-person Oyster Fest again this year at Port of Shelton. So September 30th will be Oyster Funk that the Shelton Rotary is putting on again. And then October 1st and 2nd is Skookum Rotary's Oyster Fest. So Saturday and Sunday, first full weekend in October, as traditionally held. So we're very excited to be back. One of the things that we've worked really hard at this year is to figure out how to not only provide the level of service and amenities that we have in the past, but have kind of taken the chance, the time to take another look at it and figure out what some of the things that could be changed so that we can make it even better for our community. So, as you know, Oyster Fest is well-known for its seafood, some of its educational properties, and of course, the beer garden. So you know that Liquor Cannabis Board asked for for you guys to approve or to object to our application for LCB. This year, one of the things that we're hoping to do is to make Oyster Fest an open campus. So before, before you ex-nay that, let me, let me talk through this a little bit. So what we have in mind is that beer and wine would be only available for sale in the beer garden and in the wine garden. Those two areas would remain twenty-one plus. What we would like to do is have the ability for the twenty-one plus to leave that facility and be able to walk through the Oyster Fest as a whole. So my experience from watching the beer garden, as I've been volunteering the last many years, I haven't been able to partake in it like I have been or I did in my youth. But oftentimes, somebody will have half of a beer. Their friend says, oh, since I'm empty, let me go get another one. And then by the time they're ready to go, they're half-empty, the other person. And so it kind of becomes, can become this black hole where people get stuck there. So our theory, and from what I'm hearing from many of our other festival, other organizations that are holding festivals, is that when you make it an open campus, it mitigates some of those impacts. So people are more likely to walk through the festival itself, eat a lot of the food, buy some souvenirs, participate in some of the other activities. participate in some of the other activities. And so we're really looking forward to this. We're hopeful that Liquor Control Board will approve this. So what we'd like to ask is that not only that Mason County approve our application, but if you'd be willing to provide a letter of support in this vein, we would be ever so appreciative. Oh, and just to fill into, I've spoke with a couple of our local law enforcement agencies. They've talked us through a couple of things as far as how to better identify people that are 21 plus so that we're mitigating, you know, minors that, that may try to consume what is, what is not legal for them. So we'll be looking at a double authentication. So if it's a wristband and a stamp, as well as making sure that the containers that it's served in is, is markedly different than the other beverages that may be throughout the festival. And we'll also, also be asking our servers to go through the mask program so that they'll be fully aware of the liabilities, the requirements. And then we'll also, as you know, we always have plenty of security. And so I'm talking through security as far as when people are inebriated or, or have issues that, that we'll have a plan in place for how to, how to address that.
First of all, thank you for even bringing this back and forward. You know, it's the things that you mentioned, the benefit that it brings pales in comparison to a couple of things you didn't mention, the nonprofits, the small businesses here that literally can, that can make their year. That can make, the gifting bikes for books is a great example through the Masons. There are so many different organizations that live off of what you're providing here that it shouldn't be understated at all, the great things that you deserve for, for bringing it back. Because I do know you guys were looking at other options and stuff. Mason County is its home, and thank you so much for recognizing that and bringing that here for the open campus. You know, even though normally not a fan of something like this, I've seen it work now. I have kids, and if you haven't been to Disneyland lately, that is how it's done now at Disneyland. It is an open campus and there's a lot of people drinking and stuff at Disneyland. The main key is the security, wristbands, the, the authentication to make sure that who they are. And especially this first year, I absolutely believe you're going to take that as serious as a heart attack. And I've known you for a long time and always known you to take your tasks very seriously. So I'm going to give you all the support I can on this. And I just ask that you please double security, double check. You want to make sure that if anybody starts to get inebriated, they're gone. There's kids, there's families. I know you already know this. I'm just saying it so that I won't have said after this year is over that, you know, you didn't know or I didn't mention it. With that in place, I, I surprising myself to say that I would even be supportive of the letter asking for you to get the ability to do it this year. So again, thank you very much for stepping up and thinking outside the box. I think you are going to make it extremely successful.
Thank you. I, I should have mentioned also that we are increasing our children's activities as well. So in the past, we always had Professor Bamboozle and some of the other things. So we've, we've reached out to Shelton Family Y to see if they'd be interested in, in hosting kids' activities and then have another few things that are not signed off on yet. But, but we're hopeful we'll, we'll provide even more family activity at Oyster Fest as well.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I, I'm very supportive and I've never known Skookum Rotary to do things half-cocked. You, you do things like they should be done. And so absolutely supportive of both. I think it's cool and I cannot wait. It's going to be fun. If you need help, reach out.
I'm going to take you up on that.
Yeah, so Heidi and I had a chance to chat about this a few weeks ago and, and I'm supportive as well. You know, I think the fact of the matter is you have, you have a bunch of people who are there camping and, and the drinking is a lot less regulated out in that camp area, you know, than it is inside of the Oyster Fest, you know, proper. And so I have a high level of confidence in, in both event organizers as well as our law enforcement partners to be able to manage and monitor and ensure safety, you know, within the, within the bounds of Oyster Fest. And so I'm supportive of not just the application, but also a letter of support. You know, when the time is right to do that. And I, I hope that, I hope that it's a successful event as it has been in the past. I know everybody is excited to have it back. I am for sure. And so hopefully, hopefully it's a, it's a record-breaking year for Oyster Fest.
Mr. Schudie, you're usually the, the, the great one at pending these types of letters. So will you take it on?
Sure, I'll work with Heidi and, and we can turn a letter around and make sure that we're meeting their deadline, their deadlines. When, Heidi, when do you think you would need it?
The, the deadline for LCB for the extended permit is 60 days from the event. So that would put us at July, or not July, August 1st.
Okay. But we all know how they sometimes can take a little longer.
Yes.
Meeting on the 19th.
And so let's, let's, let's put a placeholder on our 19th meeting agenda for the letter of support. And between me now and next Monday, I'll have, I'll put together a draft. Heidi, you can review it and we can make any changes as necessary. And then that way you'll have it in hand prior to the August 1st deadline.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if I can take off my Rotary hat and put on my Chamber hat really quickly, I'd also like to invite all of you to Friday's Expo and Bite of Mason County Street Fair. As always, we are shutting down Railroad Avenue from 1st to 7th. We've got nearly 100 vendors, more food options than we've ever had. So we'll be there from 11:30 to 6:30. So we'll hope to see you guys come through.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Peter Jones with our Office of Public Defense. Peter?
Yeah, hello. Hi. I decided to sign on a little bit early, given the last time you were running ahead. So glad I did that. Also apologize, I'm getting over my own bout with COVID here, so my voice isn't quite entirely up to snuff. This is an interesting situation I find myself in. The decrease of the cap for child rep dependency has really changed the way in which we can handle that because now it's five, six of someone's workload instead of five eights. It's gone from 80 to 60, and we have about 50 cases on child rep dependency at any one time, a little over. And so it's really cut into the availability of any given attorney to handle that caseload because it's over 80% of their caseload now. And so I, I know I proposed having a juvenile deputy a couple of years back, and the commission didn't like that so much. But with the change in case caps being what they are, I, I don't think you're going to find any attorney that wants to take a contract for 83% of their workload. And so I, I really do think this is kind of the only way to handle that kind of a caseload shift. And so I, I, I sent a briefing memo into the, the commission because I didn't necessarily want to talk that much, given the state of my voice. But I guess I'll, I'll right now ask if the commission has any questions about that memorandum or, or anything else.
Peter, I'll just, I'll just ask real quick, can you refresh my memory on, on why we weren't real high on adding this position in the past? I, I have very little recollection, honestly. And so if you have detail to help fill in some blanks.
Um, largely it was because we could, while I saw a benefit in having that kind of depth in the bench, there were at the time, our, our current contracts were, were handling the caseload and probably for slightly cheaper than having an employee would be. With the reduction in the caseload cap, I don't think that's possible anymore.
Commissioner, you're muted.
Also, Commissioner, it came up at a time when we were looking at all the numbers as a whole and there was some considerations of going over how much coming in, going out. We've more than, than did a fantastic budget. We're, we're way ahead of, you know, where we thought we would be. So I just letting you know that personally, I would be supportive.
Commissioner Trask?
So Peter, in reviewing, it doesn't look like there will be a, a very large impact to the budget at this point in time, right?
Uh, to the 2022 budget, because I've been sort of, there's a chunk of the juvenile dependency stuff that we budgeted to have someone else handle that I've been handling. And so there's a little extra play in that for the 2022 budget. It will probably be a shift in the 2023 budget. And then just as an additional curve ball, in 2024, there may be an additional revenue stream available to help fund it. That won't be until July of 2024, but and I can't tell you how much and I can't tell you what the likelihood is of us getting it. But it's a possibility that is floating out in the ether. And so for the 2022 budget, it'll involve shifting money from operations into salaries and that's it. For 2023, it may involve an increase.
And I know through WAC, we, we are pushing hard for other fundings from the legislature, you know, as far as indigent defense and things like that. No guarantee, of course, because it is the legislature, but at least we're pushing for that. Our children need a lot of help and with, I guess, long story short, I would be in support of this as well. And then look forward to a briefing as to how it will look in our next budget. Of course, that'll be in, what, November, October, November? But that'll work and I hope you feel better.
And so for the 2022, am I okay to place this on the action agenda or request this be placed on the action agenda for next week's meeting so that I can see if I can get someone in here as quickly as possible?
Yeah, so I would be good with that. I think your analysis is strong. You know, and I, over the past several years, you know, we've worked to increase the, you know, your staffing levels in.
You have.
And both on the, on the support staff side, but also on the, on the attorney side. And so I, I think this continues us down that path. There's a lot of benefits to having in-house counsel versus contract. And so I also would be supportive of moving this on to the agenda for the 19th and hopefully allowing you to get out there and recruit and hire.
Thank you.
Commissioners, all good?
All good. Just a quick question too. Peter, are you, is the most, most of the office, are you still working remotely?
Um, we, it's something of a hybrid. My instructions to my staff are to work remotely when you can. There are some court appearances where you can't. And so, you know, we have to come into the office to deal with that, but we are. One of the ways I try to remain competitive and try to hang on to my staff is to be as generous as possible with working conditions because otherwise they're just going to go to Kitsap or Thurston or Pierce and they'll get paid more. And so we are set up to, to do remote working. And frankly, I don't have a problem with them continuing to do that as long as I'm not getting complaints from clients, and I'm not. And I'm not getting complaints from courts, and I'm not. So as long as those two boxes are checked and we're handling our caseload, I really couldn't care less whether they're doing it from home or from the office.
Great. I was just curious and that's probably a topic that we'll be discussing further down the road. So I appreciate that and I'm glad it's working well.
Yeah, it seems to be.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thanks, Peter. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to support services, Mark is out today. So Diane, are you leading the, are we just going to go right into John?
Morning, Commissioners. So I think on here, the first thing we have is John to talk about Cascadia Rising. John, was there?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Can you hear me?
Good. Now we can see you.
Awesome. Good. Technology is a wonderful thing when I get it to work right. I was going to go into a briefing, but I, if I could, I'd like to ask for your questions first. FEMA is such a broad subject that we could spend hours discussing how, how FEMA does things. And it may not leave you with a lot of knowledge once you're done because of the vastness of what they do. I, I know I, Commissioner Trask asked me about Cascadia Rising and I provided the 2015 guide to that. It has changed very little, except for some of the engineering pieces, which the forecasting's gotten a little dimmer just based on the liquid factions and the new construction standards. So I provided you that. It has not changed. That, that is the most current update. So if I could, I'd like to ask if you have any questions about the information that I have provided you?
Yeah, no, I think I was just more curious to make sure that we are still working, that our relationship with, with FEMA and with other, you know, like the National Guard and our partners, should something happen and where we become a central hub. I just wanted to make sure that the communications were open and that we all are aware of any changes that could possibly happen or have changed since 2013. People, you know, I don't remember if there were names mentioned in the 2015 guidance. But I'm sure that you're up on, on who, who we need to contact. Should this happen, and I'm hoping and praying it doesn't happen for many decades, but should something happen, I just want to make sure that we're prepared and that we can all move forward together.
Well, let me say this, we are and we're reaching out and we're we're attempting to take it from a, from two angles. One is because of the devastation and the, the damage to the infrastructure. It's obvious that we're probably going to be pretty much on our own. So we're moving forward with those pieces, executing emergency contracts, making sure that we're reaching out to national vendors, identifying critical infrastructure, which I'll have a briefing in the next couple of weeks for you folks on how we're going to do Homeland Security's critical infrastructure, how we're going to designate what that is within our county and as well as reaching out to our partners. We're also looking at, there, I have not seen an after-action review with a lot of corrections since the last earthquake. So we're moving forward trying to find contractors that can do building inspections, airport runway inspections. So we're not competing with the state and federal government when that happens. We'll have our own contractors on hand. So if, if, if and when that happens, we'll be able to execute those and be able to get at least a Sanderson Field open. So since that's a primary supply route. If you think back on the briefing that I provided you, they're saying see water and air, and the air is contingent upon runways being open. So our idea is having those contractors. And the air is contingent upon runways being open. So our idea is having those contractors on, on the hook. So if something does happen, uh, we can immediately execute those contracts.
Oh, that's awesome. And then do you work with, with private? Will that own private airplanes too that are big enough to transport or carry cargo or anything like that? Is it, or is it just all through um government owned?
No, we're going from the top down, if that makes sense. We're currently negotiating with the National Guard to find out what they would be able to, looking at the Cascadia Rising and, and a lot of these organizations are not straightforward because it is such a questionable disaster on exactly what their capability will be after it happens. And depending on whether they're already deployed, what's going on mission-wise across the nation and the world always depends on whether DOD, Department of Defense, is able to respond as quickly as we want to. Uh, we did have an exercise a couple of weeks ago uh where we had food stops brought into Sanderson Field, which went to local food banks. So we are exercising the small plane pieces as well as looking at uh vendors at Sanderson's Field who does have larger planes that we can get more supplies in. Uh, I did have our new intern go ahead and do a list of all the vendors within Mason, Mason County. So we'll be designating those predominantly as critical infrastructure. So we can start planning and ensuring that we can contract with them if something does happen until we are resupply.
That's awesome. I was at the legislature when all of, when, when this really was a big topic and, and I saw him, I had a folder that was, you know, that big full of information, but I thought it, it was very cool and, and, and pretty um. I don't know if it was humbling or, or what, but to see that Mason County is part of the, you know, when, when crap happens, this is where we go. So it's, it's, it's cool to see that Mason County is, well, pretty darn awesome. I mean, it always has been, but it's neat that others are, are recognizing that also.
Absolutely. And one of the questions I think you had when we talked was their migration of people. A- and Cascadia Rising is one of those incidents that's gonna take away local or transportation systems. So the ability of people to get out of Seattle to migrate to Mason County is gonna be severely unpassable. Different from the pandemic, which we found a lot of people moving back into their vacation homes and then deciding just to stay as the housing market kind of went to a point where it was advantageous for them to remain. Cascadia Rising will be different just because it's gonna destroy a lot of our infrastructure to include 101, I-5 and 90. So it's gonna be interesting to see as we move forward in the planning pieces, what DOD has, or not DOD, but Department of Transportation has uh planned for uh at least resupply of those. So yeah, the ability to have people migrate is gonna be a lot different under Cascadia Rising than most disasters.
Right, right. But that's great. I, I could talk with you or about this for hours with you because I just find it fascinating. And so I, I won't continue talking right now, but maybe we can meet sometime and just, and just talk about it.
Absolutely.
Great. I just, I guess the only thing that I would be uh interested in and, and John, if you could just go over this maybe briefly, um, you know, just as we head into fire season. Um, you know, what are some things that you're working on and, and folks might expect to, you know, if there is a, if there is an incident? Um, you know, what, what DEM's role and all that is and, and our relationships with both uh DNR and the Department of Military?
Well, we're, we're fixing the DNR piece. Uh, we have a meeting and Diane's going to attend with us on Thursday at 1:00 PM with the Director of the District Wildland Fire for DNR. So her and her deputy will be here at the Emergency Operations Center. So that will begin those conversations. Uh, we've kind of laid out the way fire MOB and the fire service works because it's kind of complicated when you look at those connections, who's in charge, how do they activate? And when they do, who's responsible for what? Uh, we're gonna get those clear, that cleaned up. Having experience with wildland fire, from my perspective, it's one of the most dangerous and least controlled that we have because we traditionally a- act as though it's a normal thing. When we have a wildland fire, we just go fight it. Uh, but in 2015, we did see what happens when you underestimate the magnitude of a wildland fire uh on the eastern side of the mountains where it was devastating over there. I want to ensure that that doesn't happen here because we don't have the coordination or the communication. So we're gonna, we're gonna fix those pieces.
Commissioner Manon?
Yeah, John, uh, you know, I've been around long enough to where we've been through quite a few different things over the years, but we did uh some great training through uh past uh exercises for Cascadia Rising, I believe is what we connected to. We brought everybody in from everywhere. It was a great event. Uh, the one thing that is absolutely needed, I believe, is if you wouldn't mind putting together a training course, maybe a, you know, workshop for an hour uh or more for the Commission for role, roles and responsibilities for uh teaching us uh some of the information of where it's coming from, how we'll be transported, you know, the logistics. Uh, I think it's important that all Commissioners have that, that understanding and that training. I think it'd also be nice if we also went, all went through that CERT training too. I think it's important. Uh, so if a Commissioner has not gone through it, please uh set up something so that they can. I'd, I'd be willing to go through it again. I think it's important, as did my family.
Uh, yes, we, we have ICS 402, which I'm nationally certified to teach. So we'll be bringing those to the, to the Commission, which gives you a background on your responsibilities, obligations, and some of the liability that goes with those. Uh, as well as uh now with our new training and exercise person, he's eligible to do CERT. So we'll be offering CERT here and we can schedule where you folks can fold into the next closest one or however you'd like to do that.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Commissioners, anything else for John? All right, very good. Thanks, John. Appreciate the.
Thank you.
Your work. Uh, Jen, are you next?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. I have the um, the June financials for you. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. So beginning on page.
It's blank, there you go.
Oh. See it now?
Yes.
Great. So this is the revenue for current expense through June of 2022 compared to June of 2021. And through June of '22, we've received $24,264,280. And that's 60% of our budgeted revenue. And compared to last year, we received $22,412,140, which was 57% of our budgeted revenue. So um, we are looking good in all of our current expense departments um overall. Moving on to page three and four of the, the treasures, I mean, I'm sorry, the packet, the treasures revenue. We have um total revenue through, through June of this year, $17,624,131. And that's um 65% of our total budgeted revenue in the treasures department. Um, compared to last year, $15,433,119, which was 59% of our total um revenue budgeted. So um, again, in the treasures department, we're looking good. The city county assistance is, is up a lot. I think I mentioned that last time that we uh briefed this. And um I'm not sure if that has to do with the distribution um timing or, or if um, you know, the REIT um is up that, that much. I mean, REIT's up a lot, but um, I think this might be a timing issue. Last year, we, we received um about $2250,000 roughly. And overall, so we're already over that this year. So um, that's one reason our, our revenue is up so much. Um, any questions on this before we move on? Okay. So moving on to um page five on the current expense expenditures. Overall, we're at $19,328,999. And that's 44% of our total expenditure budget there. Um, compared to last year, we were at $18,616,895, which was that um 45% of the total budgeted expenditures. And most departments are under their um 50% benchmark. Um, there's a couple that are right there. The Assessor and Treasure, I know they have um a payment that's, that's due at the beginning of the year. So um, so that puts them a little out of balance with that 50%. So um, I think that's the main reason why they're, they're right there. Questions on this one? Okay, so moving on to the special fund six-year recap. This is uh just taking a look at certain revenue sources. We're up on most things. The community development revenue um is down a little bit, but I don't believe they've received um they have a, about a $200,000 receivable. That's not included in their, their revenue. And they'll be briefing either, either this week or, or next. I forgot to let them know that I was a little bit early on this. I think I told them I would be briefing the financials um on the 18th. And so anyway, it's a little bit early. Were able to get it done earlier. The REIT is up a lot um compared to previous years. We're at $941,512. The um lodging is up a lot, $391,570. The recordings for uh the homelessness prevention filings are, are down a little bit um compared to previous or compared to last year. Questions on this one?
This is a comment, Community Development Review. That's almost, you know, it's not quite one-third, but that's a hu- huge amount of difference there, but that year before may have been an anomaly as much too. Because it's way above where it was in 2020 still. So something to keep an eye on though.
Yeah, definitely. So moving on to the sales tax, we have received through June, $4244,972.54. And if things continue on, um, we, we are projected to receive about $8.8 million in sales tax and we've budgeted um 7.2. So looking really good there. Moving on to um the six-year financial recap, our cash at the end of June, $26,630,105. And I've updated um the operating reserves here and I'll be bringing forward to you soon, as soon as it goes through the um, the Finance Committee. Um, which is sometime in August, mid-August. So I'll probably be bringing the um reserve policy back to you Commissioners um towards the end of August. Um, to add, to look at adding another reserve uh possibly for, for capital. Um, so the recap, we're at 60% of our budgeted revenue in the general fund and 44% of our budgeted expenditures um through June. Our cash balances in all of the um special and other funds were at a total of $47,903,847, which is um up from the previous five years. On the motor pool summary. We have expended $1,015,256 um through June. We're at 67.46% of our total budget. Which we've expended our, our full um capital outfit. Budget and then some and uh fuel, I think was a little bit, yeah, 60, 64%. So um so we may be coming back with a um a budget amendment ask on that.
And if there's a time now, we've done this long enough, shouldn't we have a, a year-to-year comparison?
Uh, we did that already uh at the beginning of March, I believe it was.
I mean, on each, on each time you do this.
Oh, you want to compare it to last year? I can add that to next month.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, on the special and other funds, the revenue, we are at $27,713,170 received in the special and other funds through June, which is 34% of the total revenue budgets. And then um compared to last year, $33,599,425, which is 66% of the total um revenue. And then on the expenditure side, we are at $21,330,175 compared to $24,459,706 last year. So we're at um 24% of our expenditure budget this year compared to 41% last year. So uh questions or comments on, on the total?
Yeah, normally I would be concerned, but it's, you know, strange with the, the differences, but it continues on re- revenue versus expenditure is percentage-wise, uh, you know, chunk-wise, it's pretty close there. So it's kind of interesting. So they're holding off on spending until the rest comes in, it looks like, that which means granting and stuff probably.
Most likely. I haven't analyzed it too closely. I mean, the special and other funds are hard to look at as a lump sum because they're all so
Yeah.
intricately different. Um, but I can take a look and see if um anything alarming jumps out. I'll try and.
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not worried about it because they've also kept down their expenditure. So I'm not worried about it. It's just most likely, like I said, I'm guessing it's because of money in, money out. They're not spending it because it didn't come in for specific purposes. So and it shows on revenue, it's not coming in. So between the two, it makes sense. I'd be worried if one was higher than the other, our expenditures was close to what it was supposed to be, but our revenue wasn't coming in. So I'm not as worried about it.
Yeah, I, I think the same thing. It correlates with the, the revenue versus the expenditure. So it's not too alarming. For sure. Okay, any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
Not for me. It looks great.
Okay, great. I will stop my share and let you continue on. Thank you.
Great. Diane, anything, anything else uh from staff in support services before we move into the Commission discussion?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, we did have one item listed out for Commissioner discussion. Um, I wanted to bring up uh the idea of uh adding background checks for our uh board appointees, all board appointees. Um, had a conversation with the undersheriff several months ago and asked about how they were handling um the volunteers in their office and, and they're all required to do it. And I, I think there's a model policy there that we could evaluate. Just in terms of, uh, you know, when they come in front of us uh for appointment to a board, we're uh, we're basically ensuring that, that these are people that are uh, you know, high uh, you know, character and have no uh outstanding issues. We already asked uh for Planning Commission if folks have outstanding uh or unresolved issues with the Building and Planning Department before they're allowed to serve on that board. So I want to bring this up to the Commission and uh would, I would recommend that we uh look at the Sheriff's Policy and potentially adopt a similar policy for all of our appointees across the boards that we appoint to.
The interesting part to me is in, in my third term, I'm just ashamed. We never asked that question before. So I am completely supportive. Uh, we should have done that 11 years ago.
I know other counties do it and I think it's a good model to follow. So yeah, I support that. I think it's a great idea.
The only thing, uh Commissioner Shu, we probably should ask what type of ramifications it has for um public disclosure.
Yeah, and that's why I think, you know, if we look at the Sheriff's Policy or Commissioner Trask, if you have access through your um colleagues at WASAC that might have model policy that we could take a look at, I'm sure that I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel here. I'm sure somebody already has um dealt with the disclosure aspect of it. But we can, we can certainly evaluate that.
Right. Then we can have Tim Whitehead take a look at it and make sure that we're, we're up to par, not doing anything wrong.
Great. So Commissioners, if you're comfortable, I'm. Great. So commissioners, if you're comfortable, I'm I'm happy to work on that with with Diane and Tim.
Please do.
Commissioners, anything else for discussion?
No.
Okay. Let's see. Moving on to community services, Dave isn't here. Kel, are you handling community services? I think you have a couple items.
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, Dave's out today. He'll be back tomorrow. So first up, I have appointing building officials. So Mason County has been without a building official for quite some time, but we do have a a certified building official on staff, Todd Cunningham. He is Building Inspector Five, and so I just would like to formally appoint him as our building official. He there is an attachment to the briefing sheet that just kind of gives you that code path. We Mason County, we adopt the International Residential Code and the International Building Code, and it kind of outlines our duty to have an appointed building official and act in that capacity. And thankfully, Todd's been acting in that capacity kind of de facto for just over a year now and has brought brought some great knowledge and strength with him to our department. So very thankful for that. Thank you, Todd. And just wondering if you have any questions?
No, no questions for me. I I I think there's a statutory requirement and I I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation for that appointment.
Yeah, as am I. I'm so happy that we have Todd, you know, in our as one of our team members. So thank you, Todd, and thank you, Kel.
Welcome. As am I, and I think we're taking the time that was necessary to do what needed to be done in the proper timing.
Great. Okay, and then
Oh, just real quick, I think you've done great with with the department, and I'm so happy to see where it's headed and where it where it is now from where it was. So you're doing a great job.
And if there's nothing else on that, Todd, did you want to? Is there anything you wanted to say or?
Uh, well, I I appreciate the support. Also, I think the department is, you know, long needed a building official here. I've been watching Mason County for many years and having lived here and still living here and serving in nearby jurisdictions as building official. But I think we've come a long way. Kel and I are a good team, and we've got a great group here and other team members that just really make us shine. We're polishing up the program pretty well. And if we can get the turnover rate down a bit, we'll do even better. And so I think it's the path forward is is very positive. I'm very confident that we're headed into some very good accomplishments moving forward and and aligning community development, planning and building work really well together and and along with other departments. Also wanted to mention too, earlier you talked about Cascadia Rising. I'm very familiar with that. And there is a a program wherein our inspectors are involved in being becoming certified as emergency responders. I am already certified in that capacity and ISO and and many other subjects. And so we're encouraging commitment to that and being ready in case something does happen. And and Commissioner Netherland, with regard to your concerns about community development and revenues, we do have a number of projects that are about ready to be issued, and there's right now about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars owed as far as permits, about ready to go out the door. So rest assured, there's they're lining up for takeoff and we'll be collecting those monies soon. And that's that's about it unless anybody has questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Thanks, Todd.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And then next up is Michael.
Hello, commissioners. I'll welcome myself back to the seat. As you may know, Melissa has moved on, and so I'm back to staffing the HPC. And she had, before she left, she had set up this briefing regarding news release for needing new members. We're down to three members right now out of a seven-member commission. Fortunately, those are strong members that we have left, but definitely, this is the lowest I've ever seen in all the years I've been staffing for this. So we actually had a a news release that was still, you know, never expired, but we just thought we better get that in front of the public again. So we want to have read that on the and that would be the the nineteenth, I believe, we'd read that in the meeting.
Michael, are you gonna be present to read it on this?
That's my plan.
Thank you.
Okay, definitely fine with me.
All right.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like maybe Melissa Casey. Melissa, are you with us to brief our court?
Good. Good morning, everyone. Yes, so this morning we are briefing an amendment to our our core grant, the Rural Communities Opioid Response Plan. We currently have a point-five FTE certified substance use disorder peer navigator in the jail. And his role is to provide incarcerated individuals with peer recovery support services. He helps create treatment plans, provides naloxone trainings, and connects individuals with other reentry services and case management. We are requesting approval to increase that position to a one-point-oh FTE, which would just ultimately allow a greater caseload. He's done a lot of really great work, and there is no additional budget impact. It's already included in our our core budget for the year. So he would just ask to move that to next week's action agenda.
Excellent. I am supportive of moving it forward. Great program.
Yep, as am I.
As am I.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, commissioners, anything for Melissa or Kel and their teams?
Right now.
Excellent. All right. Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, and moving on to Public Works, Loretta, are you with us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, commissioners, we've got quite a few items this morning. First up for your consideration is a contract scope of work for Kennedy James. And this is so you can take a look at the scope of services. Should we proceed with the sewer extension? And the the amount is about seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And there are grant funds available remaining out of our existing commerce grant to pay for the scope of work. And we are asking that we bring this forward for action on the same day that we're bringing back the award for the contract. Richard, any details to add? That was the real short and sweet version.
Well, I I I think that's what the deal is. Pretty short and sweet, pretty concise.
What what does this mean for us internally? I know we've used we've used them for this for the other section of the extension that's occurred. What does it what? This is a time and effort saver for our in-house staff or management?
Absolutely, yes. Time and effort and expertise, all of the above.
Commissioners, any other questions or I guess any questions?
No, I I let's move it forward.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have that on there at the same time if they're going to move forward.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
All right now.
It doesn't sound like it, so.
Okay. Next up is a a request to sa- sign a landowner agreement for two properties that the county received as part of the flood buyouts years and years ago. And this is to make sure that permission has been granted for restoration work, that the Conservation District is performing on these two parcels. And we are requesting approval from the chair to sign the landowner agreements.
Commissioners, any questions or feedback?
No, I I think it's good to move forward.
Okay, that's good with me as well.
And next up, Mike has a road closure rescheduled to share with you.
Morning, commissioners. Belfer to Huya Road, mile plus six-point-six, we had a culvert replacement scheduled for June. HPA said that if it was a dry June, we could start the project early, so we actually scheduled for that. But it was a wet June, so they posted, they said we couldn't start to work until later, and so we had to reschedule. So now we're looking at closing the road August twenty-second through August twenty-sixth to perform that that project.
Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments, feedback for Mike?
It looks like it's before the school season.
Yes.
Oh, I'm good.
Good as well. Thank you, Mike and Loretta, for all you guys did on that project there earlier.
Great, I'm supportive as well.
A happy solution for all.
The schools were happy.
So next up, we have a couple of tip-cap items, commissioners. Our our tip-cap members, you may recall, we did an extension. And so that is nearing its expiration of August first for our members. And at the same time, commissioners, we're requesting that we broaden, basically, for lack of a better word, the resolution for appointment. You may recall, we have very specific assignments based on commissioner district and representing different modes of transportation. And what you see before you for this first item is a draft amendment that would provide some more flexibility in appointment. We've had, oh, at least one to two members consistently or positions that have not been able to be filled, sometimes as low as four. And so the purpose of this is to be able to, again, broaden and hopefully encourage other folks to make application and and round out our board. Are there any questions about the the draft resolution?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I myself am not comfortable with the the revisions. I think it's extremely important, especially when this thing was created. It serves so many different purposes, but one of them is the direct connection with specific locations. I think it's extremely important that commissioners, districts, you know, one, two, and three, each have a representative. I believe that each one of the, you know, the urban growth areas should have a representative, and although it's been hard to get one, eventually we will get one from the Hudsonport Union Rural Activity Center area. I believe that we should keep those in place and endeavor to fill them. And if we can't fill them, then to make them at large for the remainder of that term and make those other three positions just at large positions. That's how we've done things in the past in other boards. We stick with the commissioner districts. We stick with the things that that we surrounded it with, but if it cannot be filled, it can be filled at large until the term expires.
Yeah, so I I get where you're coming from, Commissioner Netherland. I think I'm not a huge fan of of it being so prescriptive. We've actually, I think, you know, we look at our planning commission as an example. I think, you know, I think it makes sense to have each commissioner district represented. So let's let's start there. I think you and I are in agreement on that. I think being prescriptive beyond that is is something that I'm interested in revising so that we're able to be a little bit more flexible in terms of how and where we recruit for folks to be on the on the tip cap. You know, and I just think that this is an opportunity to refresh that. And and there's nothing that says that if it's not working, we can't go back to the way it was, but I'm I'm supportive of the changes with the exception of ensuring that each commissioner district has representation on there.
Yeah, I think for me, I would I would have to agree. You know, sometimes it's hard to to find members to to join boards. We have quite a few citizen advisory boards that I don't know why we can't get more people involved, but people are busy. I understand that one. I absolutely want to make sure that that each each of our districts has, you know, a person on there to represent that district. I don't know. It it looks good to me. I don't see any issues with it at all. So I would be I would be in supportive moving it forward.
So, you know, so commissioners, I'd ask you to reconsider and I'll explain a little better why. Basically, when we were setting this up, we set it up so that each commissioner district was represented by two, not one. And the reason why we did it, we also felt that, for example, you could live in Tuhuya in my district but would not understand the needs of the workings in Belfer or Allen. Completely different, you know, type of area. The same thing with Shelton. You know, it is absolutely, at the time, it was believed that Shelton should have an actual representative that lives in the city to help us to deal with some of the issues that we may deal out through that. So again, that's why I'm asking that it change you know, to represent the these urban growth areas. It does separate, so notice, you know, you have the urban growth area for the city of Shelton. You have that that so, you know, your 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 district commissioner, then you have Belfer, Allen, Urban Growth Area. It guarantees one person from the urban growth area in my district, so that still provides for two per district for fairness. And if we left the others for at large, then again, if we do come up short, that person can go at large until that term expires. That's nothing actually new from what we've done before, but this guarantees that we get two representatives per district, but one also in the areas that we desperately should have somebody with a voice that lives there.
So here's what I might recommend. Might might split the difference a little bit is two from each commissioner district, one from each, and then one from each UGA that we have, and that gets you to nine without being so prescriptive with.
Okay, so instead of that large, you're you're suggesting that that basically becomes three from from each district, and that that works too. And you're just guaranteeing that we have one from representing the urban growth areas in each of our districts. Is that what I understood?
Correct.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense to me because you're you're not being so precise as to where they come from, but at least you you still have your three from each district. No, I I that makes sense to me.
Was that clear, though?
No, perfect. I've got it. Basically, still nine positions, and we can say two from each district and each commissioner's district and well, three total and one specifically from the UGAs.
Yeah, from one of the UGAs in the district.
Yep, okay, good enough. And the other thing that I would draw your attention to.
To include Rural Activity Center, Commissioner Shutey, in your district, you have Union, which is a rural activity center.
Yeah, so is is the Belfer and Allen UGA lumped together in this?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I would I would say then yeah, we'll just use the Shelton UGA. And I would, you know, I would say incorporated or unincorporated UGA. I don't think it needs to be city limits.
I agree.
Belfer, Allen, UGA, and then Hudsonport and Union Rack.
Yep, okay. Perfect. Easy enough. And then commissioners, we I don't believe we had anything in terms of the term. And then Commissioners, we, I don't believe we had anything in terms of the term for the committee. And so Kelly drafted some language, again, I believe Commissioners discussed this previously about staggering the terms so that we've got some coverage as people leave and new members arrive on the committee, and so that we don't have everyone there with their terms expiring at the same time. So we've got a three-year term and then a staggering that's described under C.
Yeah, I think Kelly did a good job putting that together. I'd be comfortable trying that out. It's better than what we have now.
I agree.
Oh yeah, agreed.
Okay, all right, good enough. We'll make those quick changes and bring that back for action.
Good job.
Yeah, good job Kelly.
Yeah, yay for Kelly.
Yes. All right, and then next up will be the reappointment of, we have five members, and I know that Kelly was trying to track down Jeff as well, so we need to get some confirmation about whether Jeff is reapplying or not, and then how the recommended terms were applied. We took a look at the most recent members, so those are the three years. And then the two-year term recommendations are for folks that have been long-term tip cap members, which actually, we've got a lot of long-term tip cap members, so big thanks and kudos to folks that have stuck with it and definitely feel that they are making great contributions, and we appreciate that.
The knowledge in that room was very impressive. As I said, I actually went because there was a comment about, you know, how it was being run by staff only to find out that I couldn't have asked for it better, and staff did an incredible job. It was citizen-led, in my opinion, and the staff was full supportive with information, and they had a lot of questions, great questions, which meant that they were highly educated on the issues that were before them, and you don't get that way unless staff held your hand and took you there. So with that being said, I think they are wonderful. I'm supportive of reappointing.
So I'm gonna disagree, but only because we are changing the membership makeup, and so I'd like to hold off on reappointment now and advertise, given the new criteria, and then see what applications we get as part of that, then evaluate based on what we receive.
So we don't have a complete exodus, though, because aren't we out after a certain point? Maybe we should take the longest, the three years, and keep them, or Loretta, what did we just do recently for keeping them on?
We just made a quick six-year, or six-year, six-month extension.
And that was because of COVID, right?
Yes.
That was because of COVID?
Well, partly that, and also because of taking a look, I believe. Commissioners wanted to re-advertise at that time, which we did. We still have not received any new applicants at this time.
So we did re-advertise?
We did, yeah. Yep, but that's been probably about six months ago now.
Now, just a comment on Jeff Carey's one, I think that's going to be because of an application he put in for the Planning Commission.
For the PAC.
Yeah, and I know in talking to Mark, there was a confusion. He was, Mark was going off of the Planning Commission instead of, you know, our planning, our Citizen Advisory Commission, which is different. We use a different platform than the actual Planning Commission that the state had put together, ours is an advisory committee. So it did not have the same structure. And I think that's coming back to us, but we'll have to wait until Mark comes back, but I think that may be why you're not getting the response from Jeff until
Okay.
they get a response from the Commission.
Well, and how, you'll have to refresh me, I'm not, I don't remember who lives in what district.
I don't either.
Because I want to make sure that, so we're changing the way that it's set up, so can we hold off on this until we get some more information?
Can you bring it back to a structured?
Yep, absolutely.
Because it sounds like the Commission's going to be moving forward with that new structure. I think we have to kind of know what's going on there.
Yep. Yeah, we'll bring back the revised resolution and then a summary of who is representing each district currently. I'll see if I can find that real quickly.
Well now, all six of these are going to end August 1st? So we'll have no planning?
That's correct, Commissioner.
So there's, I want to see five names on here. Am I missing?
Jeff.
Well, Jeff is the other person, yes.
Right, but wouldn't that make three from the first district, from District 1?
And I believe some of our appointments were made that way because we could not fill the other districts. And during briefings, we did talk about the fact that they would, that if an applicant came from the district that we had a vacancy in, the appointment would be made. So following the language of the draft resolution.
Yeah, do you know where Don lives?
Don is, I believe, in District 1.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, I, we have him listed here as District 3, but.
I think my records show for board, this is Diane, that he lives on Walker Park Road, so I think that is District 3.
Yeah.
Correct.
Either way, we have to realign anything we have to make sure that if we're going to pass the new structure, so maybe we can, no matter what, have that before us for what it looks like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tim Lincoln, who is not up for reappointment yet, is District 1. And then Amy Asher represents Transit, and she is a recent appointment. And then Phil Wolf is representing District 2, and Don Pagriba, District 3, Mark Carlson, the City of Shelton UGA, Jeff Carey, Belfer, Allen, UGA, and then Jack Johnson is also in District 1, sorry, District 1, and represents freight and trucking.
How is Phil Wolf representing District 2 and living in Allen?
He represents bicycling.
Yeah, bicycle and pads, yep.
So.
Does he live in Allen?
But he is within District 2, yes.
So with the new structure, that would change that.
Yeah, I just think there's a lot that needs to be kind of cleaned up and tightened up here with the membership and, you know, like I said, I think going back out with the new criteria and having that out there in the community might be beneficial. So I'd like to see both of those things happen before I move forward with reappointment.
Yeah, same.
All right. Okay. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
And next up, a couple of discussion items. Mike's got all kinds of exciting projects going on and wants to be able to share those. Alexa, be quiet. Not sure why or what that's all about.
I am so sorry to jump in here, Commissioners, I have to leave.
Okay.
No worries.
Thank you, sorry, everybody.
Take care, Randy.
Alexa, be quiet.
Does Jeff Bezos want to provide some input on Mike's projects?
Maybe, I don't know, maybe he wants to join Tip Cap.
All right, so just to warn ahead of time, again, out on the North Shore, mile post 7, we've already got the signs up and everything, we're going to close the road and replace the culvert at Katy Creek. That's July 25th, and so we'll be, road will be closed all week. Later down the road, we're going to hit North Shore again, a great bend, but the road will be open for one-way traffic during that stage construction, so in that area, we have a large enough area there to be able to actually build a bypass and have traffic come through there, so. Currently, we're today and tomorrow, we're out at Oak Park, off of Brockdale, where County Crew is paving point 68 miles of the main line of Oak Park through there. Residents are all pretty sad about it. We're actually widening the road and making a walking path. Bicycles can use the shoulders that way, so we paved them about four feet wide. Red side is out at Aggett Loop, they've set the box last Friday for the box culvert there on Upper Uncle John's. And by the end of this week, they'll be real close to being completed. We're moving along.
That's cool. I know I've been driving around areas throughout the county and seeing the roadwork and the improvements, and it's pretty exciting to see what you guys are doing, so pass on a big thank you to the crews and to everybody that's working on it, because it takes, it's a team, that's for sure. Oh, cool.
So I'll do a quickie little video. There's the bypass, and there's the red side crew out setting box.
How about that?
Isn't that just amazing?
That's fantastic.
Yeah, they've been really efficient going out business pretty quickly, and it's impressive to see. And next, we need to show our impressive crews as well, because they've been doing fantastic work also, so happy to highlight that. Hopefully, we can get some of the paving shown, and Commissioners, it is the season, so if there is any particular projects that you have an interest in or want to get out and about and take a look at, please don't hesitate, we'd be happy to take you out and showcase our good work.
Well, I think I might take you up on that offer.
Yeah, perfect. California is coming up, sunny side, we've got all kinds of fun and exciting projects, so.
Yeah, I will absolutely take you up on that offer.
All right, the last discussion item, Commissioners, is the Taylor Town Surplus Property. And this is simply to get your concurrence on the sale price. And you may recall, this was a piece that we acquired for the Simmons Road Project some time ago. No Simmons Road Project. We need to sell the property for at least what we purchased the right of way for, so there were some comps looked at to see, all right, do we need to recoup what the original sale price was, or has the value of the property escalated? In fact, it is not, so what we're proposing, Commissioners, is just simply to sell for what the original purchase price was for the property and requesting your concurrence on that.
Okay, and that meets the, all the muster that it needs to in order to move forward?
It does, yep. It's compliant with what the DOT's requirements are and for our real estate requirements as well.
Great.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay, thank you. And other than that, just some upcoming meetings to let Commissioners know about. I think you've seen those. I hope nothing's a surprise, except maybe the Kiwanis Club. Dave and Mike were invited to the Spencer Lake Resort this Wednesday, and so Dave and Cobree will be attending and providing some updates on projects that we've got going. And then we have our tip cap meeting Wednesday, and then Saturday we'll be providing a quick update to the Take Back Mason County folks on the Lower Uncle John's project. So, and I believe Tip Cap will be, some members from Tip Cap will be attending that as well. So I will be attending that on Saturday. And I didn't get it on here, but there's another Skokomish meeting on Tuesday, tomorrow night, at the Community Church from 5 to 6, and it's a repeat of the meeting that was held about two weeks ago. And that is it for some upcoming meetings that we plan to attend.
Loretta, when you say Spencer Lake Resort, do you mean, do you mean the bar?
Yes, yeah. It's a bar slash resort.
It is, no, I'm sure everybody appreciates you putting in resort versus a seven AM meeting.
I know, right? Bar at 7:00 in the morning, I don't know.
Some days. So Commissioner Trask, I don't know, you know, I wasn't here last week for our Commission meeting to notice my attendance at any of these. Are you planning to attend?
I am, I'm planning to attend the one regarding Aggett.
Okay.
And I believe Commissioner Nederland said that he would be at that also.
Okay. I will plan to attend the Kiwanis Club meeting.
Okay.
On the 13th, unrelated to the fact that it's at Spencer Lake Bar.
And at 7:00 AM.
We don't need any more rumors about me out there. So happy to, happy to take that early meeting, and then I'll also be at the, planning to attend tomorrow evening's meeting in the valley as well.
Great.
Good, I just really appreciate Loretta, Mike, and your team making time, Cobree and Dave getting out there and meeting directly with the community. I know that's been a challenge over the past couple of years, based on all the things that are outside of our control pandemic-wise, but you know, I think we have a strong track record of meeting with the public in community meetings and trying to walk folks through the projects and the plans and why we have to do some of the things that we have to do, and so just appreciate, this is a healthy, this is a healthy load of items and events coming up for the public to be engaged with us and us to engage with the public, so just really appreciate it and look forward to visiting with our constituents out in the community.
Yeah, likewise. It's the fun part of the job, right? And it helps improve our projects and hopefully turn some win-wins. An example is Oak Park. Commissioner Shutey, I can't remember how long ago it was that we met with the community members there, and we're discussing folks, some of the wanting to reduce some of the perceived dangers with the kids biking and walking and skateboarding down to the park. And so here is a perfect example of Mike, Dave, Jeremy, and team thinking about, okay, how can we take our pavement preservation project and turn it into a win-win for the community as well? So exciting and good things.
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, hats off to, you know, Oak Park is such a neat little community tucked away, you know, off of Brockdale, and Jim Lerner, who is, or I think maybe was, at least a couple of times, HOA president back in there, and him and some of his neighbors really did a great job of getting together and working with us and the Sheriff's Office, and you know, I think there's a model there for us to duplicate countywide in terms of how do we get, how do we get movement on some of these projects that are important to folks? And how do we educate people on, you know, project details and just have that conversation in a way that I think is really beneficial not only to them, but also us at the decision-making level.
Yeah, we recently had another communication from folks around Spencer Lake, same thing, looking for some improvements for their walking, and great, people are active and moving and getting out and about, and so it's exciting to think about ways that we can help facilitate that.
Yeah, you know, even looking at, you know, some of the changes that we just discussed with Tip Cap, I mean, I think there's an opportunity to go back to some of these people who are really I mean, I think there's an opportunity to go back to some of these people who are really, you know, interested in, in making traffic improvements in their communities to, to, you know, at least try to reengage them in this way to get them involved and bringing those new voices to the conversation, I think, can be really beneficial to, um, you know, what it is we're trying to accomplish with our, with our annual and six-year plans.
Right. I agree. I think having, having input from, from new voices. Um, I mean, we definitely appreciate all the voices that we hear from too, but I think new ideas coming into the county also. And you see what's going on in other counties and sometimes you wonder, well, why not us? Well, there are, we do have limitations, but hearing the new voices and getting new ideas and, and seeing new opportunities, I think it's, it's, it's pretty cool. I think we've come a long way in the past few years, um, by getting more people involved, changing systems here that, that it's, we've become more productive and more engaging, I think.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, uh, anything else for us, Loretta?
I think that's it on our end. Commissioners, anything from you?
I don't believe for me. Commissioner Trask?
No, I don't. Just look forward to a road trip.
All right.
Excellent.
Can do.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Trask, any additional discussion?
Nope, I've got nothing.
Okay. Uh, so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn for the day.
So moved.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank all those opposed. And the motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Bye.